I think we have a quorum.
Okay. Great. We can start our public hearing. So, good evening, everyone. I'm Vicky Barbero, the Chair of Manhattan Community Board Five. Our public hearing chaired by the Board's First Vice Chair Nick Athanell will begin prior to the CB five full board meeting. So Nick, please call the public hearing to order.
Thank you, Vicky. Good evening, everyone. This is the public hearing of Manhattan Community Board Five. I'm Nick Athanell. I'll be your Chair for the public hearing. During this public hearing, members of the public are invited to speak for two minutes per person on the subject set forth in the agenda for this public hearing or on any topic that relates to the affairs of the community district. If you would like to address the board before it votes on any matters tonight, now is your opportunity to do so. Although there will be a public session during the full board meeting later, that public session will be at the end of the meeting after all of the votes have taken place. So if you want to address the board on any matters before it votes tonight, now is your time to do so. If you would like to speak during this public hearing, please use the raised hand button now. When you're recognized, we will allow you to speak, but you must unmute yourself. In order for you to be heard, you will have to unmute yourself. We'll begin the public hearing with Mitchell Siegel.
Thank you so much, Nick. So I'm being timed right now. I'm just, I'm familiar with the two-minute thing because I screwed that up the last time I spoke. However, in my two minutes, I'll say, you know, a couple of matters. Number one, jewel thief is a basement space. It's never had a problem. You can't hear anything outside to the street level, number one. Number two, they were asking for a couple of extra hours during a particular time period, which is, in my opinion, not problematic. Number three, although it violates the Broadway Corridor Act, a lot of things violate the Broadway Corridor Act, and I went through that in the last couple of days. And you know, it's not consistently applied. So, so all that being said, I think you have a good apple here. It's not going to be problematic to the community. It's not going to be problematic to traffic, parking, or you know, people hanging out outside. I heard one thing about a velvet rope, but I don't think that really applies here. And I would ask, you know, again, I know, I know it violates the corridor rules that you guys promulgated, but I think this, this premises should be able to pass that. And I ask for your help in doing so. That's all.
Thank you, Mitchell. Next up, Jeff Waddell. Jeff?
Yes, hello. I just wanted to mention one thing. If the community board should pass the license for Mission Ceviche, I'm requesting that there's a specific note that this is not a finding that it's in the public interest. I'm afraid that the applicants and their attorney may try to characterize it that way. And there's really been no evidence presented that this is in the public interest. On the other side, there's been a lot of evidence presented that it's not in the public interest. So if the community board does pass this, then I request that they make that note. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Next up, Larry Aronson. Larry?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Larry, welcome.
Oh, good. Thank you, Nick. I'm curious to know whether or not the Quality of Life Committee is still active. You and the committee have been very helpful in the past, dealing with the noise issues on our block. And I have an issue with a neighbor in the building next to us, KK Sweat at 27 West 20th that's operating a gym in there and making loud noise. And the building doesn't have a CFO, and I've just been running around in circles trying to find somebody who will pay attention to this. 311 doesn't do any good for this. The Department of Buildings, their advice was to contact the sheriff or contact the fire department, but the fire department doesn't handle it. Somebody suggested calling the New York Attorney General's Office, and it's just a problem. And what's going on is the gym is running in a boot camp style where somebody is yelling at 7:30 and 8:30 in the morning, and it comes right through our walls and we can fix this up. We can't use that room. Anyway, that's the story, and I'm just wondering, is there a Quality of Life Committee that can address this, or is this up now to the full board to deal with these kinds of issues on our streets? Thank you.
Larry, this sounds familiar. Have you brought this to the attention of the board office?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so I think
I don't think I've gotten a reply, or I haven't seen a reply.
I'd be surprised to hear that, but we'll ask the Board Office to look for your, your emails and and get back to you about this, because that would be a constituent services matter.
Well, I'll just resend it and see where we can go with, you know, with more, more of the story.
Great. The best email address for that purpose, Larry, would be office@cb5.com.
Okay, thank you.
C5.org, I'm sorry. C5.org.
Okay, office@cb5.org.
Thanks, Larry.
You're welcome.
Next up, Hope Martin. Hope? Please unmute yourself.
I had, there was a timer. It's
Yeah, hi, thank you. I would just like to reiterate what Jeff said about the 500-foot law for emissions ceviche nomad. I know it's not in your jurisdiction, the community board, and it's a state liquor authority item. But because there's been so much discussion about it, it's been brought up numerous times in our community meetings. And because it's an issue that's important to a lot of us to be looked into, I reiterate what Jeff said about putting it in the affidavit or some note saying that this has been an important topic and that we wanted addressed this 500-foot law in terms of this liquor license and the six liquor license within 500 feet in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Hope. Would anyone else like to speak during this public hearing? Please use the raised hand feature now. Kate Madigan. Please unmute yourself.
Perfect. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Hello, good evening, everybody. My name is Kate Madigan, Government Relations Coordinator from the Public Theater. Just wanted to bring out a few updates on the Public Theater's current work in Central Park and downtown. Firstly, our Under the Radar Festival is currently running through January 22nd. There's a world-renowned international theater festival shining spotlight on new theater work from around nine countries with 36 visiting artists. Secondly, Joe's Pub has a full slate of shows planned through January and February. Joe's Pub is dedicated to supporting performing artists at every stage of their careers, and you can join them while enjoying food and refreshments. Thirdly, our winter and spring season will begin in February with the world premiere of The Harder They Come on the 17th and runs until March 26. Then Dark and Disabled Stories opens February 28th and also runs until March 26. Fourthly, our Free Shakespeare in Central Park is back this summer. Hamlet is on stage and will show from June 8th to August 6th. Due to our ongoing renovations of the Delacorte, only one show will premiere this summer. So as always, each performance is free and now even more accessible. We updated the seats, you know, larger seats for larger body types and also updated ramps and whatnot. So anybody with any ability can see the show. I will update the community board with local ticket distribution dates. You don't always have to go to Central Park or downtown to collect tickets. I will definitely make sure everyone has my information, and each of our shows comes with a free performance downtown. So feel free to visit today TIC's app. Thanks so much and Happy New Year again.
Thank you, Kate. Next up, Rifta H. Rifta, please unmute yourself.
Mute. Okay, hi. I live here on the 26th, 27th, facing Park Avenue South. The club that's asking to stay open till 4:00 AM? No good. 1:00 AM is already extra. It will not bring high-end clientele. It will not bring money to neighborhood and more sophistication. Total garbage. Absolutely no. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Rifta, can you tell us the address of the premises you're referring to?
Some club, I think it's asking the liquor, I mean, to stay open till 4:00 AM on, I think, was it Broadway and 32nd? Or shabby neighborhood to start with.
Yes, that's on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
And if I, since I still have ill time, how can we lower the high-pitched signal of all these ambulances that are outrageous? Park Avenue can have no traffic, nothing going Christmas night, Christmas Eve. They not, they blow their horns. It's outrageous. City have to become more quiet, or the whole signal must be changed to more pleasant, something else. It don't have to be heard entire Manhattan. All these ambulances are the worst. Paris doesn't have them like this. So I think one fix, I'm very technically nerd, is to change that high-pitched signal lower. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Lisa Wager. Lisa, please unmute yourself.
Hello, Happy New Year, Community Board Five. My name's Lisa Wager. I'm the Director of Government Community Relations at the Fashion Institute of Technology, the SUNY College, on 27th between 7th and 8th. Just a little happy note to let you know that FIT was recently ranked quite high for social mobility. The Social Mobility Index is a non-traditional college ranking that emphasizes indicators of economic opportunity rather than prestige. And in the Ninth Annual SMI, which was released in November, FIT was ranked in the top 20 of over 1,400 national institutions. And among these top 20 colleges were four Sunnis, six Cunis, and then about six California, various state and university ones. So it's basically us mixing it up with California. FIT had particularly, has particularly positive scores for early career salary, on which we're quite high, in fact, with the sixth highest on the entire schedule. Low tuition, low student debt load, and a strong scoring for ethos, which is your outreach and engagement efforts. The Office of Admissions makes every effort to reach students across economic divisions, and much of that involves encouraging and educating prospective students well before they apply. We offer workshops to help prospective students understand the portfolio submission process and other application requirements, and also our pre-college programs often, several of them teach various portfolio preparation, which you don't get in New York City public high schools. And on our, we have a discovery day, which is a sort of an open house thing, and we're having it in person again, finally, in March, and it allows high school sophomores and juniors to experience the college's many majors with hands-on demonstrations. And of course, our new Social Justice Center not only provides scholarship support and opportunities to BIPOC students, it aims to reach young people as early as middle school and teach them about the creative industries. So send your folks, and I'll see you in February. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during the public hearing? Please use the raised hand button now. Odette W. Odette, please unmute yourself.
Hello. I'm Odette Wilkins, and I'm President and General Counsel of Wired Broadband in Forest Hills, New York. We're a nonprofit advocating for safe technology. I'm also a technology attorney, and I can tell you that I see that there's on the agenda, the 5G cell towers. They are, they can be dangerous. Community boards around the city are starting to wake up to the risks. For instance, CBA in Manhattan sent the city a clear message that they do not, they do not need the towers and they do not want them. They passed a resolution in December disapproving the towers and applying a moratorium on the planning and construction of Link 5G cell towers in their district. And some of the reasons that they cited was the impact on sidewalk clearances, rat infestations, and a desire to have these telecommunications infrastructure underground, as well as the long-term health impacts on public health or the environment, including young children, seniors, people with medical implant devices, pets, plants, and parks. An online petition by an historic preservation society in CBA has already garnered over 1,900 signatures in opposition under the banner "Don't Sell Our Streets to 5G Towers." Also, there was a concern that 5G towers would track their children's locations because 5G uses a beam-forming technology that tracks your cellphone, and 5G is easily hackable. There's also, there's also been no transparency because OTI has not provided information as to the electrical and engineering drawings and antenna specifications. And the cumulative emissions can be enormous. Now, cell towers have a tendency to catch on fire, and 5G runs very hot. So there is a problem with that. Also, there's an insufficient fall zone. There's supposed to be more than three stories of clearance around the tower, and there isn't. So there is a danger to these 5G towers.
Thank you, Odette. Anyone else for the public hearing? Anyone else? Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing. Back to you, Vicky.
Okay, thank you, Nick. I will now call to order the full board meeting of Manhattan Community Board Five. I'm Vicky Barbero, the Chair. To go over the procedure, we'll start our full board meeting by hearing from any elected officials that are in attendance and wish to address the board. The elected officials will be followed by any representative of other electeds who may report to the board for two minutes each. The board then enters into its business session, which consists of the adoption of the minutes, the chair's report, committee reports, resolution, and a question and comment period, and then we take the votes. Comments or questions from either applicants or the public, or if additional information is needed, are allowed only with the chair's approval. We will then conduct a public session followed by old and new business and adjournment. So I'll start this evening's public electeds. And please, I see you're already using the raised hand, and I see we have our new council member Simone. Welcome. Not council member, sorry, Assemblymember, sorry.
No worries. No worries. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Community Board Five. For those of you who do not know me, I am Assemblymember Tony Simone, the new Assemblymember from the 75th District. As many of you know, the district covers much of CB5, primarily west of Fifth Avenue. I'm excited to work closely with CB5, especially considering the issues facing our district that will have major impacts on our area. I know CB5 has been a major leader in the effort to create a plan for new Penn Station that works for our community and truly upgrades our regional transfer infrastructure. As many may know, I do not support the current plan. It is the development plan, and I know that Community Board Five has been working hard to develop a real plan for the community that has a transportation plan. I'll be working with the Board's Community Led Improvement Plan Task Force. We all recognize that the governor's current plan is not a real transportation plan and over-reliance on commercial development, which I'm against. We have a lot of work to do, but I'm working closely together with Senator Liz Kruger, a longtime friend of mine, Representative Nadler, Brad Harman, and Councilmember Eric Botcher, and a community united to have a real plan for Penn Station, knowing that we all need a new Penn Station for the community and for the tri-state area. We wrote an op-ed in Gotham Gazette during my campaign about having, pushing for through running, and I commend the leaders of CB5 who are ahead of the curve on this. We also all heard the possibility of a casino coming to Manhattan. I appreciate CB5 making your stance against the casino clear last month. I'm against the concept of a casino in Manhattan, and I will look at all these proposals very skeptically. They have an uphill climb, and would love to hear from all of you in the near future on how we look at these plans very closely and hoping that the community unites in what they really want in future development in our district. And I'm not so sure casinos part of that. My community office is up now, fully up and running. We're currently located on West 29th Street in former Assemblymember Gottfried's office. My team is just about fully in place. I'm excited that I have some of Assemblymember Gottfried's staff, including my Chief of Staff Matt Ty, whom many of you may know, and our CB5 liaison Ben Lonestein. And I just returned from Albany Legislative Session, as you all know, has just begun. I joined my fellow legislators and advocates in calling for free and healthy school meals to provide for students across New York. We got to see the governor's state of the state just a few days ago, was that yesterday? I'm losing track of this week. It's been one long week. And while we, like many of the governor's plan, we want to, you know, devils in the details. And our staff and I will report back as we hear more details on her housing plan, which so far we support. I also signed on as a co-sponsor a number of bills ranging from tackling climate change by committing New York to building publicly owned renewable energy, to creating a reproductive health access fund to ensure all those seeking safe abortions can access one. Other bills I have supported in my first two weeks addressed a dire need for strengthening the system for people with developmental disabilities, and a Patrick of legislation, a package of legislation to approve the MTA by closing their budget deficit and increasing service. I want a line in the budget because we all know the MTA and our subway system, our transportation system is the heart of our city, and you know, I want less cars and more public transportation throughout the city. And of course, we will also be tackling the public safety issue, which many of us are feeling and seeing every day. The mental health crisis and affordability crisis in our district. We'll be sending out a community update soon detailing a full list of our actions and contact information. I look forward to working with many of you.
Well, thank you, Assemblymember. It's really a pleasure to have you join us. We're thrilled. We help you do it quite often, if not all the time. We're also pleased that our goals are really in step. So we thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you, and let's keep in touch throughout the month. You know, the months ahead, okay?
Thank you for all your hard work. I know how hard the community board works. I was once on Community Board Four, so I know the long hours you put in and the volunteer hours that you put in.
Thank you. I know your schedule is tight, but there's a report that's going to be given tonight that you'll find very interesting. If you can get back on at some point and just take a listen, it'll give you an idea of even more of what we're all about, okay?
Sure, I will try my best, but I think my staffer Ben Lonestein is also on, so if I don't get to go back on, I'll get a report from him. But I do hope to join you as much as I can in person and virtually. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thanks so much, and welcome again.
Have a great meeting.
You too. Okay, let's see. Who do we have next? I think we have our Borough President on.
Hello, everybody. Hello, Madam Chair.
There you are.
Great to see all of you. What a wonderful report from our brand-new Assemblymember Simone, who's just going to be great. Extremely excited about working with him, and I think we also have Senator Kristin Gonzalez on too, who I'm equally thrilled to work with as a colleague. So exciting new leadership for here in CB5 and other parts of the borough. We woke up this morning to some breaking news. The nurses' strike was settled. 7,000 nurses going back to work, including Mount Sinai here in Manhattan. This is really great news because it means there's going to be better and safer staffing ratios for nurses, which is great for patients, great for nurses. Really an important win at what continues to be a challenging time for for hospitals in Manhattan and New York City as we face still significant COVID cases and and other challenges. And that's a reminder of the fact that we really need folks to get their bivalent COVID boosters. And I checked the numbers for CB5. The report comes out every Thursday. You guys are only at 35% of residents having received their most recent, having received the bivalent booster. We got to do better than that, CB5. And you all, as leaders, this board's been great on public health throughout COVID. I think it would be really helpful if you could speak up on this. I don't think the problem is anti-vaxxers. I think people are just, that's sort of their attention has moved on, but there's lots of reasons why it's extremely important now for folks to get that booster. A related public health matter that you have definitely been on the leader and leadership, been leading on, is public bathrooms. And I mean, Julie Chu and Renee Consala have been doing this for years. Thank you. And of course, you know, we were able to pass a landmark bill in the City Council a couple of months ago. I had a great partner there, Councilmember Rita Joseph. That's going to require the city to find one new location for public bathroom in every zip code. And I really want CB5 to proactively help guide the city on this and come to them, come to us with suggestions, because I know you're thinking about this. I know that tonight you're looking at a pops at the Parker Meridian that I think will have a public bathroom. That's, that's a win. And as you probably know, on Monday, this probably didn't get as much press as it deserved, but the MTA reopened bathrooms at two stations in CB5, at 42nd Street Bryant Park, and also in Union Square. These are going to be staffed and with cleaning and maintenance, which is everyone's first question. Only open at the moment from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM with an hour midday for cleaning, but it's, it's an important win. There are over 150 other bathrooms throughout the network that I'm advocating to be reopened and staffed and cleaned, but we're taking this as a win. So lots of good news on that front. Thank you, CB5, for passing a resolution in December, calling for the city to plant 1 million more trees. We've now gotten almost every board in Manhattan. This is going citywide. We're getting huge momentum. Thank you, because this really is a, it's a climate issue. It's a resiliency issue. It's an air quality issue. It's an equity issue, and so much more. So your reso, and by weighing it and speaking up, it's, it's really quite helpful. Finally, just two quick procedural items. Community Board applications are open for Manhattan. So if you're up this year, apply. We can't wait to have you come back. And if you have folks in the neighborhood who are willing to step up and lead, please let them know. Last year, we had a near-record number of applications, well over 900 borough-wide. We wanna meet or beat that this year. So please spread the word and get your own application in. Finally, my first-ever State of the Borough address is coming up on Tuesday, January thirty-first, six PM. It's gonna be Uptown City College. Would love to have all of you there. We're gonna be rolling out some big new policy announcements, reflecting on the year and the challenges ahead for our borough. We're gonna be talking directly about community boards and your critical role. So come on by if you can. We'd love to have you all there. So that's it from me. Thanks, everybody. Great to see all of you. I forget your format. I don't know if you do questions or if this time, if so, great. If not, happy for you to move on. But anyway, thank you, and back to you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much. It's good to see you, and Happy New Year. And we look forward to hearing from you on the thirty-first, for sure.
Thank you, Vicky.
Okay, have a good evening. I think we are also joined by our new Senator Gonzalez, new to us.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Thank you so much for having me. Yeah, so I am the new State Senator for District Fifty-Nine, which I'm sure, as many of you know, it is a new Senate district that covers Queens, Astoria, Long Island City, Brooklyn, and Greenpoint and Williamsburg and Manhattan from Fourteenth Street and Stuytown all the way up to the UN. So we have a bit of overlap on the, I guess, western part of our Manhattan side of the district. And I'm really excited to have joined the Senate and have some good updates for all of you today. So we were sworn in a week ago. So we are now week one on the job. Since then, we have received our committee assignments. I am chairing the Intranet and Technology Committee in the Senate. So if any of you have interest in, you know, tech policy, please reach out to our office. It's definitely a place where I would love to center all of you and center our constituents. I've also been placed on the Energy and Telecoms Committee, which is great for climate and power plants in the city. We'll be looking a lot at what it means to have renewable energy there. I was put on the Ethics Committee and on Consumer Protection as well as disabilities. So there's a lot of opportunity there, again, to collaborate with all of you and love to, you know, hear your voices, hear your opinions. And on that note, we also had our first bill that we introduced on Monday in Albany. It's the Personal Privacy Protection Modernization Act. And what it does is requires all law enforcement to have a warrant if they're accessing our private information, that they're accessing that information from any level of government. So currently, there was a loophole that said, you know, on the city level, you didn't have to have a warrant if it was, for example, Omni Information, if you're swiping in with your MetroCard or library information, anything like that. But we are passing this so that it's standardized across levels of government. And so in addition to that, you know, we fully staffed our office. I have with me my Director of Community Affairs on the call, Melissa Maverick, who, there she just went on camera. She'll be dropping her email in the chat if you have any constituent concerns. I wanna be mindful of time, so I'm just gonna run through the last portion of updates very quickly. But aside from office setup and, you know, our committee assignments, also in the last month, actually, not, this goes beyond Senate, we've been working with Nadler's office. We're at a roundtable where we talked a lot about public safety. We also talked about noise pollution, you know, traffic concerns in the cities. We'll be working with him on that. In addition, we've been out supporting multiple labor initiatives, including out on the picket line with NICE. We're out for excluded workers. If we have any freelancers on this call, we've been supporting the Unemployment Bridge Fund to help freelancers get some coverage. And then finally, I just wanted to call out that we are still in the search for our office space, which means that I've been fighting with the Senate to ensure that we get a Manhattan office. But you all know that real estate's very expensive, and it's taking some time to get them to find a spot that, you know, falls within our state budget, which is conscious of all of your tax dollars, but also ensure that we have that Manhattan space. So I'll stop there and happy to take any questions if folks have.
Well, welcome. Congratulations, and we thank you for joining us this evening. And we so look forward to working with you in the future. So we will definitely be in touch.
Thank you so much. Actually, did forget one important thing. I have my inauguration next Thursday, and I wanted to formally invite all of you to join me in Astoria. Senator Schumer will be doing my swearing-in, so if you all want to hear another Senator Schumer story, he'll be there as well, yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you again. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we're going to the elected representatives now, starting with Laurie.
Hi, Vicky. Good evening, Vicky and CB Five. Yes, Laurie from Councilmember Eric Botcher's office. We have what we think is exciting news about a muffler noise pilot program. Earlier this year, Eric introduced city council legislation to double the penalties for excessive motor vehicle noise violations. And we know fines only work with, if there's enforcement. So to that end, the Department of Environmental Protection has been conducting a muffler noise pilot program, which includes the use of a roadside sound meter and camera to capture evidence of vehicles emitting noise in violation of New York State's Vehicle and Traffic Law and the city's noise code. In September, Eric wrote to the DEP Commissioner requesting that this program be brought to Council District Three. And DEP, rather, has now installed and activated a roadside sound meter and camera in our district. According to DEP, this enforcement device has already begun issuing violations to drivers with illegally modified mufflers and tailpipes. We are having conversations with DEP about the possibility of the devices also issuing violations for unnecessary horn usage. The device's location can't be divulged because they have been vandalized and disabled in the past. So we have asked that the meter be periodically moved throughout the district. And finally, we're having a vaccine booster clinic in our office next week. If you know anyone who has yet to receive the latest COVID-nineteen booster shot, we are partnering with Walgreens to offer the Pfizer booster in our office. Space is limited, and appointments are required. I'll put the link in details to sign up in the chat, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Laurie. Next up will be Eric Strazza.
Hi, thanks so much, Vicky. Great seeing everyone tonight, and I hope everyone enjoyed the holidays. Happy New Year. This will be pretty quick on my end. Just have two quick updates from our office, one of which has to do with our recent announcement of a significant funding opportunity for service providers and other community organizations, specifically with an eye toward intervening and engaging community members to address things like mental health and substance abuse. Now, this is a dual initiative RFP that we're rolling out, one of which is for Neighborhood Navigators, which will engage with individuals while they're still out in the community, and another one for court-based navigators. So basically, once those individuals enter the criminal justice system. And the exciting update on our end is that we recently announced, or released, rather, the RFP specifically for the Neighborhood Navigators Initiative. That is a total, for the total of the nine million dollars, that makes up six million of it. So I can, if it's okay with Vicky, post that link into the chat. And there's also a full press release in our office website, on our office website, for those who want to learn more. Other than that, I just wanted to let everyone know that we recently rolled out a 2022 Year in Review document that we basically put out as a newsletter. I can link anyone else to that as well, or you can reach out to me directly if you want to learn more. We basically just went through a lot of the hard work we did this year and a lot of the initiatives that we rolled out to keep all New Yorkers safe in our borough. So if anyone's interested in learning more, feel free to reach out to me. And again, if it's okay with Vicky, I can always, I can post those into the chat now. I can also post my contact information, but again, everyone should feel comfortable reaching out offline if they'd like. Thanks so much, Vicky. And again, great seeing everyone tonight.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Next up, Olivia Glenn Rayner.
Hi, everyone. I'm Olivia Glenn Rayner, and I'm with Congressman Nadler's office, just here to introduce myself and say we are very, very excited and happy to be representing all of this community board now. I will be your primary contact, so I will put all my information in the chat, and I'll be here at all the meetings to give all of the updates of what's going on in DC and New York, and also a little update on casework and the ways that we can help all of you. But pretty much, we will, you know, be here doing all the same casework and advocating that Congresswoman Maloney was doing before. So if you need help with immigration, passports, social security, Medicaid and Medicare, Veterans Affairs, federally-backed student loans, IRS issues, USPS, Small Business Administration, and then, of course, any federally-funded housing, so NICHAN Section Eight. That's the stuff that we can help in our casework side. And then again, I will be your liaison for anything DC or community-related. But we are very excited to be with you and work with you for years to come. So looking forward to that.
Thank you, Olivia. Good to see you. Next up will be Alex Marinidis.
Hi, thank you. My name is Alex Marinidis. I'm from Senator Kruger's office. I'm the new CB Five Liaison for that office. I just have a quick update as we head into the new year and the new legislative session. Our district lines have changed and now contain most of CB Five, so we gained most of the community board. And more specifically, we gained more of Midtown, the Garment District, and Times Square. I have a map of our new district, which I will put a link to in the chat, and I will also send it to Mike and Marissa after the meeting by email. Senator Kruger has greatly enjoyed working with CB Five on countless local and state issues over the years and looks forward to continuing to work closely together. Governor Hochul gave her State of the State address on Tuesday afternoon, which some of you may know, and emphasized environmental issues, the economy's impact on the upcoming budget, significantly expanding affordable housing development throughout the state, and increasing investment in mental health services. Many more details on the governor's priority will be available once she releases her executive budget sometime in the next few weeks. The Senate and Assembly will then be spending much of the next few months holding budget hearings, identifying their budget priorities, and negotiating a final budget with the governor. As the Chair of the Senate's Finance Committee again this session, Senator Kruger will be chairing budget hearings along with the Assembly Ways and Means Chair throughout February. Dates for budget hearings, along with details on how to participate, will be announced once we know when the government's, when the governor's budget, sorry, will be released. So once we have that out, I'll make sure that CB Five is aware of that as well. Senator Kruger is hosting her five-part roundtable for seniors and boomers once again this year. But of course, anybody is welcome to attend regardless of age. This year's theme is "Living Well: Age-Friendly Housing" and is focused on housing issues that particularly impact older New Yorkers. The first event on affordable housing options for seniors took place this morning, and a recording of the event and materials is available, and it will be posted on our website in the next few days. The last thing I'll say is the next event is on February ninth from ten to eleven thirty AM, and I will send that link to Mike and Marissa. And I'm sorry, I think I went over my time slightly.
That's okay. Thank you so much, and welcome, Alex. Nice to see you. We look forward to working with you.
I look forward to working with you too. Thank you.
Next up, Franklin Richards.
Hey, good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Just a few quick updates for you folks. Last month, Mayor Adams, in coordination with Fifth Avenue Association, announced plans to reimagine and redesign Fifth Avenue. This new vision plan stretches from Forty-Second Street up to Fifty-Ninth. It will make Fifth Ave a pedestrian-centered space that decreases congestion, improves public transportation, prioritizes improvement in public realms, and makes New York City's most iconic street safer. It's a project that Councilmember Powers really supports, and they're looking forward to working with local stakeholders, including yourself, to ensure that everyone is involved in the planning. Secondly, the city council's discretionary funding application is open fiscal year twenty-four, and is now available. I will be putting the link in the chat. The deadline is February twenty-first. If you would like to set up a time to discuss any budget-related questions, feel free to reach out to our Budget Director, Hillary Brandage. Also, her contact information will be in the chat.
I think we lost, Franklin, we lost a part of your report.
Oh, sorry. What was the last thing you've heard?
I think about two sentences back.
Everything about the budget process will be placed in the chat just to help you out. And last, but not least, Councilmember Powers celebrated a ruling made by the New York State Supreme Court to protect over sixty-two hundred apartments that would have faced a loss of rent and tenure protections. These units were facing deregulations by ownership, which was viewed by many as a direct violation of the Housing Stability and Tenant Protection Act passed in June of 2019. This is the first major tenant-led attempt to validate the intent of the Housing Stability and Tenant Protection Act. If you needed any more information about that, feel free to reach out to our office, and we're happy to discuss. Sorry for cutting off. I hope you got all of that last part. Again, Happy New Year, everyone.
Okay, thank you, Franklin. Good to see you. Next up, Jackson Fisher.
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name is Jackson Fisher Ward. I work for Assemblyman Harvey Epstein. As most know, the district lines have changed, and now Assemblyman Epstein represents kind of the southeastern corner of CB Five. So we're excited to start attending these meetings and representing constituents who live in CB Five. So I just wanted to introduce myself and introduce our office, let folks know that we're available for, you know, anything, anything. Our office is open, you know, Monday through Friday. We're taking in-person appointments now. So with that, I'll just mention a couple of quick updates. Obviously, everyone knows that the governor delivered her State of the State on Tuesday of this week. The Assemblyman was there in Albany. It was delivered at the Assembly Chambers. And excitingly, a couple of the Assemblymen's bills were mentioned in the State of the State. We expect her to include a piece of legislation that he, a version of a piece of legislation he introduced in 2019, which would require CUNY and SUNY to provide medication abortion at student health centers. And another bill of his, which would allow New York City the option to create a program to legalize basement units. There are actually over a hundred thousand, close to a hundred fifty thousand basement apartment tenants in New York City. They don't actually enjoy the same tenant protections as other renters do. So giving the city the tools it needs to bring these apartments under a legal regime, we actually think is really important for hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers. So I know I'm running out of time. I'm gonna paste our full board report in the chat, and it's really nice to meet everyone, and it might not be me who continues to provide updates to the board, but we'll certainly send a staff member each month, and looking forward to that. So thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to you as well, regards to Assemblyman Epstein.
Thanks.
Okay, have a good evening. Next up, I think last is Kate Scherer.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kate Scherer, and I'm here from Councilmember Carlina Rivera's office. I have some legislative updates and a community event to share. At the end of December, the City Council Committee of the Whole held a two-day oversight hearing on asylum seekers in New York City. Carlina really implored the city to demand more financial support from state and federal governments, as the city is expected to spend or five hundred ninety-six million dollars a year to provide shelter, education, healthcare, and legal aid services to those who have arrived in recent months. This is according to the New York City's Independent Budget Office. Carlina really remains concerned about the strain on our social safety net, on our local schools, and is working closely with nonprofit organizations in the district to provide on-the-ground resources to asylum seekers here. In other news, the state's first marijuana dispensary opened right here in District Two. While it's exciting, our office is working really closely with constituents and enforcing agencies to respond to complaints about illegal smoke shops. So if there are any in CB Five you want to bring to our attention, please let us know. And to help address this issue, Carlina introduced legislation to create a cannabis business directory to identify active and legal establishments and make them available on the website of the Department of Small Businesses. This directory would also include information on what stores are operated by social and economic equity applicants, minority and women-owned businesses. And finally, we are hosting a virtual RAT Academy with the Department of Health on January twenty-sixth from six to eight PM. And I will add the link to that in the chat. That is all. Thank you very much, and Happy New Year again.
Thank you, Kate. Good to see you. Okay, I think that wraps up our elected representatives. Lots of new ones. We welcome you all and look forward to working with you. Ending that takes us into our business session. So we now are in the business session of the board, as I mentioned earlier. are in the business session of the board. As I mentioned earlier, only board members are allowed to speak. Please remember to keep your videos on during the meeting. Um, our first roll call of the evening will be for attendance. And this is being done since the December twenty-two minutes will be, they're being postponed until February and will not be voted on at this time. So we'll vote on them in February. So I will now call on Mary to read the roster. Please respond by saying present or here.
Hey, Akaelis.
Here.
Athenel.
Here.
Beichman.
Here.
Mary, I'm here. Sadio. Dawson. Ellington.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Garcia. Okay, Gasha.
Here.
Klaus. Tristan. No. Harris.
Present.
Hirschberg.
Here.
Isaacs.
Here.
Johnson. Kayback.
Here.
Khan.
Here.
Hello Farski.
Here.
Cincella.
Here.
Lagisco.
Present.
Levy. Sam's not here. Livase.
Here.
Mafia.
Here.
McCall.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Moonton. Moonton. Shapiro.
Here.
Sherburne.
Here.
Sigmund.
Here.
Slutskin.
Present.
Spandorf.
Present.
Spence.
Sung.
Present.
Webb.
Present.
Zoo.
Here.
And Young.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks everyone. That takes us into my Chair's Report the evening. So I'd like to start by saying, um, I hope that you all had a great holiday season and you're ready for the new year's CB five committee meetings. You've all heard me say the importance of and the work of CB five starts at our committee meetings and ultimately it's acted upon by the full board. Twenty twenty-two is a great year for our board and its committees with huge amounts of hard work and involvement in the numerous issues and challenges that came to us. We should all be proud of the many accomplishments and positive results of our labor. It was really an incredibly successful year and certainly one to remember. So I thought you might all enjoy and find interesting jogging our collective memory to remind us of our work and challenges in twenty twenty-two. And so here is a synopsis of some of our more controversial and difficult issues that were dealt with. January, Preservation of At-Risk Buildings Landmarks Committee. In January, the Landmarks Committee learned through the State Historic Preservation Office, SHIPO, that in twenty twenty, New Jersey Transit submitted a request for comment for the status of existing historic resources in the Penn Station area. In response, SHIPO determined eligibility for the National Register of Historic Places for Pennsylvania Plaza. That's the super block where MSG and Penn Station are located. So keeping in mind that Empire State Development, known as ESD, is the sponsor of a land use proposal to override New York City zoning or rules to develop all or a portion of nine blocks around Penn Station. The committee, the board, in examining the criteria and background of the request strongly disagreed and voted that SHIPO reconsider and reverse its determination of eligibility and focus efforts on preservation of at-risk buildings in the surrounding area. February, Open Meetings Law by the Open Meetings Task Force. In February, the Open Meetings Task Force examined the continuation of virtual meetings, which involve collecting data from all board members to gauge the board's preferences and comments regarding in-person, virtual and hybrid meetings. As a result, CB five supported amending the New York State Open Meetings Law to allow New York City's community boards the ability to hold virtual and/or hybrid meetings in perpetuity. March, Letter to Governor Hokel Ray Penn Station Expansion Alternative Scope through the Transportation and Environment Committee. Empire State Development's General Project Plan, GPP, which we opposed in December of twenty-one to develop the area around Penn Station, included a preferred alternative to Penn Station. Extensive work by the Transportation and Environment Committee resulted in our sending a letter to Governor Hokel and relevant agencies citing specific alternatives that should be considered in the review process. We stated our support of the goals of capacity expansion at Penn Station, even though the GPP's specific land use action and preferred alternative did not satisfactorily and comprehensively evaluate alternative approaches. Annual Roster of Programming in Our Parks, the Parks and Public Spaces Committee. Also in March, through our Parks and Public Spaces Committee, the board voted to support Madison Square Park's annual roster of programming. And in May, we supported the annual spring and summer rosters of Bryant Park and Union Square Park. Governor Hokel's Housing Budget Proposals through the Land Use, Housing and Zoning Committee. Our Land Use Committee, having serious concerns about Governor Hokel's budget proposals and their effectiveness to achieve the stated goals, recommended and the board voted in March opposing and urging the governor to remove easing restrictions on converting hotels, lifting the residential FAR cap and ending the four-twenty-one A tax abatement from the state budget. We urged our state and city legislators to oppose the proposals and we urged the governor to include the public, local legislators and community boards in discussions on these matters to find more effective ways of achieving their stated goals. April, Post-Parade Events Around Madison Square Park, Parks and Public Space Committee. In April, we recommended approval of applications that were submitted to our Parks Committee for annual post-parade events in and around Madison Square Park. Applicants have followed our parks' policies and have exhibited good faith efforts in continuing to improve their events, including multiple meetings and correspondence with the community. But although we approve these events, we continue to question the appropriateness and their detrimental impact on the Flatiron Neighborhood, including the considerable impact on Madison Square Park in seasonal months of park usage. We implored the NYPD and SAPO to proactively consider alternative locations for these events in twenty twenty-three. Ratification of a letter from PSQL Committee to the SLA in response to the com- comment deadline for a twenty-four-hour ground-floor restaurant at two hundred West Fifty-Fourth Street. The State Licenses and Permits Committee, formerly PSQL. During the months of February and March, the State Licenses and Permits Committee, formerly PSQL, now fondly known as SLAP, met with the applicant for a new liquor license at two hundred West Fifty-Fourth Street. After a mutual agreement regarding hours and method of operation, we were notified by the applicant's attorney reneging on the agreement and due to a deadline, the committee immediately sent a letter to the SLA requesting denial of the liquor license. The board ratified the committee's recommendation to the SLA to not grant the license. Most important regarding our action is that we were notified that the SLA did in fact agree with our assessment and our request and the liquor license was not granted. Interestingly, in July, the applicant returned to CB five, this time agreeing to the conditions and stipulations previously negotiated. And the committee and the board voted to deny the new application unless those agreed to conditions were adhered to and incorporated into the method of operation. May, Release of Joint Study of Inter-City Curbside Bus Practices through our Transportation and Environment Committee. In May, the Transportation Committee, working with CB four, recommended to the board a completed study which summarizes curbside intercity bus practices in New York City, Washington DC, Philadelphia and Boston. CB five released this important study, which we see as a necessary first step to inform a possible NYC rule change as the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey is planning and constructing a replacement intercity bus terminal. The Need for Public Bathrooms in New York City through the Budget Education and City Services Committee, Public Bathrooms Task Force. Also, prior to our May meeting, our Budget Education and City Services BEX Committee was instrumental in forming and leading a multi-board task force to study the need for public bathrooms in New York City. Recognizing that need, we voted in May to urge the city to provide more public bathrooms throughout the five boroughs. At the same meeting, we wholeheartedly supported the Borough President's Bill to propose a public bathroom site for each zip code. June, CB five Open Meetings Hybrid Meeting Guidelines through the Open Meetings Task Force. After months of intensive work and examination by the Open Meetings Task Force, in June, we approved the meeting guidelines for full board, committee, subcommittees, task forces and working groups to conduct hybrid meetings in compliance with the New York State Open Meetings Law. We urged the governor, state senators and assembly members to continue to improve the Open Meetings Law's provisions for video conferencing by reconsidering the requirement of a full in-person quorum and urge the mayor, the city council members and the Manhattan Borough President to allocate additional funding and resources to better support virtual and hybrid meetings and the resources and technical support required to sustain such practices. CB five Recommendation to DOT's Permanent Open Restaurants Program through the Land Use, Housing and Zoning Committee and the Open Restaurants Task Force. June was a busy month for task forces. So after much work and many hours, including public hearings, the Open Restaurants Task Force presented to the Land Use Committee on the Board their findings and recommendations in a multi-page resolution with comments, concerns and recommendations about DOT's Permanent Open Restaurants Program and the design guidelines that should be considered. Our resolution strongly recommended, quote, "that the appropriate citywide environmental impact statement of suitable scale and depth be conducted by the city and DOT and released according to the per- pertinent statutory guidelines in connection with the program. And at such time and place that its findings can guide the proper implementation of the program as it is rolled out in its regulations issued for review by the public." Support of Senate Bill Ray Medicaid Funding for Impatient Mental Health Treatment through the Budget Education and City Services Committee. CB five is on record as supporting additional funding for mental health issues. And after learning in June through our BEX Committee, there is a shortage of in- impatient mental health care options in New York. We supported a Senate bill to help address the needs of those suffering from mental illness by providing medical funding for impatient treatment. July, Letter to DOT Commissioner Ray Reiteration of Broadway Vision Plan through the Transportation and Environmental Committee. In July, we were all greatly disturbed by the June twentieth collision at Broadway and Twenty-Ninth Street involving a taxi bicyclist and and multiple pedestrians, which injured six, three critically. After a robust discussion was held at the Transportation and Environment Committee meeting, we sent a letter to the DOT Commissioner reaffirming our May twenty-twenty-one resolution of our continuing support of DOT's plan, which includes redesign of successive stretches of Broadway between Union Square and Fifty-Ninth Street. We also emphasized and implored agencies with jurisdiction to increase enforcement of the proper usage of these corridors by cars, bicyclists and all vehicles. New liquor license for two hundred West Fifty-Fourth Street through our SLAP Committee. So July was that month that because of our recommendation against this license, which was denied by the SLA, we received the new request from the sa- for the same location. This time, the applicant agreed to our former conditions and stipulations and the board voted to deny unless the conditions were adhered to and incorporated into the method of operation of the SLA application. September, Renovation of Landmark Lexington Avenue Armory through the Landmarks Committee. In September, the Landmarks Committee examined the renovation request of the landmarked Lexington Avenue Sixty-Ninth Street Armory. We recommended conditional approval and requested goodwill consideration to the aesthetics of an alternative style of doors and associated door handle hardware to preserve the integrity and historic character of this building. Special reference was made to the two proposed glass-painted ADA compliance entryways on the Eastern and South façades. Change in Method of Operation at One Fifty-One, One Fifty-Nine West Twenty-Sixth Street, SLAP Committee. In two thousand fourteen, Compton Ale House on Twenty-Sixth Street signed an agreement through the SLAP Committee with various conditions and stipulations to their liquor license. In September of twenty-two, they applied for an alteration to extend their operating hours to four AM. After hearing opposition from the community, we agreed that an extension of operating hours beyond two AM would have a material adverse effect on the quality of life in the neighborhood and set a destructive precedent for existing and future operators on the block. And we recommended denial of the alteration. October. District Needs and Budget Priorities through our Budget Education and City Services Committee. In October, we passed our District Needs and Budget Priorities, which always involves a huge amount of time and expertise on the part of our BEX Committee members. Community-led Zoning Framework for North Chelsea Penn Area Land Use, Housing and Zoning Committee. Following our December twenty-first, I'm sorry, our December in twenty-one official opposition to ESD's Penn Station Proposals, GPP. In October, our Land Use Committee developed and the board passed a resolution supporting and adopting a letter, quote, "a zoning framework for a cohesive future in North Chelsea and Penn Station area," end quote. We stated that we believe that although this area is of critical importance for the region and for the nation, the local community is best suited to spearhead and design a plan to address the multiple needs and work with all stakeholders. Our letter states that we will undertake the effort, quote, "to create a resilient, ambitious, pragmatic and comprehensive plan to address the transportation, infrastructure, zoning, socioeconomic, fiscal and urban design needs of an area that has proven vexingly difficult to fix," end quote. November, Landmark Evaluation Request for Seventeen-Ten Broadway Building, Landmarks Committee. In November, the Landmarks Committee examined the landmark evaluation request for the building at Seventeen-Ten Broadway between Fifty-Fourth and Fifty-Fifth Street. The building meets LPC criteria, quote, "as part of a historic district known as Automobile Row, as well as having a special character or special historic value as part of the development heritage or cultural characteristics of the city, state or nation." The board voted in support of the evaluation of the building and requested LPC evaluate Seventeen-Ten Broadway for individual landmark designation. December, Casinos in CB District, CB Five District, Land Use, Housing and Zoning Committee. In December, after much discussion with the public through our Land Use Committee, we passed a resolution opposing a casino development in CB five and urged our elected officials to vote no on the citing of a casino in CB five. We stated that we believe the considerations regarding the labor market, economic activity, congestion, community fallout and gambling addictions all provide ample reasons to not develop a casino in our district. Support of Million More Trees Initiative, Parks and Public Spaces Committee. Also in December, through the work of the Parks and Public Spaces Committee, the board learned that New York City's five- the board learned that New York City's five borough presidents are calling on the mayor for the city to plant a million new trees by 2030. We voted to support the Borough President's Million More Trees Initiative and included our concern about the maintenance of existing and new trees. CB5 Comments to Title IX Compilation of Codes, Rules, and Regulations of New York State Regarding Adult Use Cannabis through our State Licenses and Permits Committee. With the legalization of the production, sale, and use of recreational cannabis in 2021, the SLAP Committee examined and put forth its comments to the board in December, basically making seven recommendations regarding the cannabis regulations and enforcement of existing and future laws regarding cannabis renewals should be reviewed, the same as initial licenses. In 2022, the committee established the Cannabis Task Force and led the community on the upcoming introduction of establishments in our district for the retail sale and on-premises consumption of cannabis. Of special note, I would like to mention that during 2022, the SLAP Committee reviewed 932 application notices for new liquor license and negotiated affidavits with 47 operators, achieving binding and enforceable concessions on hours of operation, crowd, and noise control, and other elements of an establishment's method of operation to preserve the quality of life in our district. This is what's so important. The committee had a 100% success rate in that the SLA followed every single one of its stipulations into the liquor licenses of the respective applications. The most notable of these successes was regarding the glass ceiling rooftop application at 1204 Broadway, where the full board of the State Liquor Authority respected CB5's concerns about the unenclosed rooftop space and deferred to our request that a liquor license not be granted at the premises while the rooftop remains unenclosed. I think you all remember that. As I mentioned earlier, this synopsis only focuses on our top challenges and accomplishments and work that we did in 2022. So you all know the amount of time, expertise, and effort that's involved each month. Looking back is not only a way for us to see the fruits of our labor, as the saying goes, but it continues to give me the reason to express my pride once again in being the chair of this hardworking, effective, and impressive board. So with much gratitude and appreciation, I would welcome and hope you will give me the opportunity to continue to serve you in the coming year as well. And I give many, many thanks to you all. Oh, it's nice. Thank you. Okay, so that moves us into our committee reports. Starting with State Licenses and Permits, Nick.
Thank you. Vicki, uh, SLAP has two resolutions for the board tonight. May I have them deemed red?
So deemed.
And I'd like to bundle.
And bundled.
And then after the resolutions, I'd like to give a report on cannabis.
Sure.
So the first resolution is, um, application for the change of a method of operation for the liquor license, uh, by PRYM 1216 Basement LLC at 1214-1216 Broadway. That's between 29th and 30th Streets. This, uh, this application first came to us in 2019, and the operator, uh, agreed to comply with our restricted licensing area guidelines. Um, specifically, um, hours of operation no later than 2:00 AM Monday through Saturday and 1:00 AM on Sunday. They've now requested to extend their hours of operation till 4:00 AM Monday through Saturday and 3:00 AM on Sunday. Um, besides being, uh, outside of the guidelines that, that we're required to comply with, um, we took, we took another look at this location, and we really found that later hours than 2:00 AM was not appropriate. It's a very mixed-use block, very dense, um, with other liquor licenses, big hotels, and it's really just not appropriate for late hours there. Especially given the large number of new licenses going into that immediate location, which was the reason for us to form the Broadway Corridor, uh, Task Force in the first place. Um, the community came out, uh, in opposition to this change as well, and, uh, the committee voted to deny the request unanimously, 14-0-0.
Okay. Does anyone have a conflict with this application? Does anyone have any questions to the resolution? Any comments? Todd?
Just want to add that I worked on the Broadway Corridor Task Force, and it was incredibly gratifying to see that the work we did and the background information we had as to setting the times in that area was adhered to, and it's incredibly important, as Nick said, that we voted to, uh, maintain those hours, and I hope going forward, we can continue to do so.
Okay, anyone else? Any comments? Okay, seeing none. Next resolution?
The next resolution is an application for a new on-premises liquor license by Mission Ceviche Nomad LLC for a restaurant located at 5-7 East 17th Street between Fifth Avenue and Broadway. This premises is on the ground floor and basement levels. It contains approximately 9,911 square feet in total on the two floors. There are two patron bars with a total capacity of 302 occupants, 57 tables, 209 chairs, and 26 bar stools. Um, it's a restaurant with a full kitchen, and, um, the applicant agreed to, uh, really all of the stipulations that we requested, specifically hours of operation no later than midnight, seven days a week. Um, only recorded streaming music, no live music, no DJ, and no karaoke. Uh, the basement, uh, was a concern, so we restricted them to seated table service only in the basement with no private events at any time. They agreed not to pursue outdoor dining or sidewalk café operations. Uh, they agreed to conduct sound and, and a sound engineering study to make sure that the premises was secure, was secure from, uh, sound or vibration escaping the premises. Um, this is something new that I learned this, this meeting. There's something called an electrostatic precipitator, which is a device that cleans odors and particles from the ventilation and exhaust of a restaurant. And, uh, the operator has agreed to install one of those, uh, to minimize any, um, any smoke, uh, and odors emanating from the premises. They agreed to the rest of our, uh, requests. Um, you can read them in the resolution. Those are our standard stipulations. And, um, we, the committee voted unanimously to recommend denial of this application unless the operator agreed to all of these stipulations, and they delivered a, uh, resolution, uh, an affidavit agreeing to them. The vote was 13-0-0.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Does anyone have, um, any conflict with this application? Does anyone have a question to the resolution? Or any comments? Okay, seeing none, we will take both of these to a vote. Mary?
Akailis?
Yes.
Athenel?
Yes.
Beichman?
Yes.
Rosnahan, yes. Sadio? Jonathan, okay. Ellington?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hirschberg?
Yes.
Isaacs?
Yeah.
Kayback?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Kalifarski?
Yes.
Killian? I'm sorry, my bad, she's one. Uh, Renee, Kinsella?
Yes.
Legisco?
Yes.
Levise?
Yes.
Mafia?
Yes.
McCall?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Shapiro?
Yes.
Sherburn?
Yes.
Sigmund?
Yes.
Sludskin?
Yes.
Spandorf?
Yes.
Dens?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
Do?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
And, uh, I believe I skipped Nancy Gashow?
Yes.
And me also. And Dawson also.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sarah.
Yeah.
Are you voting yes?
Voting yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Nick. That takes us to Land Use Housing and Zoning, Leila.
Vicki, I have some more things.
Oh, I'm sorry, you wanted to keep the report, yeah.
Yeah, before I go into cannabis, can I also address, uh, some of the comments that were made during the public hearing?
Sure.
So during the public hearing, um, two members of the public asked a question about the 500-foot rule and the requirement that a liquor license be in the public interest, quote unquote. So that language is from the, um, alcohol beverage control, uh, law that, uh, controls licensing of, of liquors, liquor in the state. And basically, the 500-foot rule requires that if a liquor license is within 500 feet of another liquor license, among other requirements, the license has to be, issuing the license has to be, quote unquote, "in the public interest." Now, the, the State Liquor Authority has interpreted that language very, very broadly. Almost anything can be in the public interest. Um, if the restaurant hires employees, um, providing jobs is in the public interest. Serving food, feeding people, is in the public interest. Um, activating, uh, uh, an empty storefront is in the public interest. Breathing is in the public interest. So a- a- almost anything that, um, that, uh, a, a new liquor license operator, um, would do is in the public interest. So it's not to say that because one license is within 500 feet of another that we have much more leverage to deny, uh, an application. And in a case like this one, um, that did fall within the 500-foot, uh, rule, um, the, the restrictions that the operator agreed to were just as strict, if not even more strict, than some of the requirements we have even in our restricted licensing areas. So based on community board precedent, um, the, a- a- and the fact that there is really no leverage to deny a license for lack of public interest, um, we believe that the SLA will enforce these restrictions.
Any question? Does anyone have any questions or comments? That's very clear. Okay, thanks, Nick.
So, um, finally, I wanted to update, uh, the, the, the board on cannabis. Cannabis is coming to, uh, CB5. In fact, the Office of Cannabis Administration has identified two locations so far in our district. Um, the first is at 182 Fifth Avenue, which is between 22nd and 23rd Streets. And the second is on 33 Union Square West, which is between 15th and 16th Streets, right opposite, um, Union Square Park. It appears that both of these locations have some, a few things in common. They're very near uh, transportation. They're very near parks. Um, and we expect these applications to be coming to us, uh, over the next month or so. Um, we are getting ready to review these applications and any others that may came, come in. The Cannabis Task Force is busy at work. Um, and we expect to, uh, hear from them recommendations on how the board will review liquor, uh, cannabis license applications. Um, that hearing will be, um, at the SLAP meeting on February 1st, if all goes well. Anyone interested in that, please attend. The other thing I'd like to announce is that, um, we have the offices, Office of Cannabis Administration coming to address Community Board 5 at a special meeting of the SLAP Committee, which will be next Wednesday, the 18th, at 6:00 PM. That will be virtual, so anyone else interested in attending that can, can please do so. At that meeting, we expect to hear what OCM has to say, uh, about the licensing process, the input that community boards will have, and, uh, and some other things. So we plan to ask them a lot of questions in time for our, uh, hearing on guidelines for review of those licenses.
Is that going to be remote? That's, that'll be virtual, won't it?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, good. Okay, any comments or questions? Okay.
Vicki, I just wanted to say, um, so this is Catherine. I'm the chair of the Cannabis Task Force, and last month, when you made that announcement, I was kind of silent, but I wanted to say that the work is, we're making progress, and just to let everyone know that we're here. So if you need to reach out to us for any reason, there's lots to talk about. There are probably more questions than we'll ever have answers to, but cannabis is already here. It's always been here. So we're moving forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine. Okay, anyone else? All right, that then, thanks, Nick. Thanks, Catherine. That leads us into Land Use Housing and Zoning, Leila.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, Happy New Year. Um, for the, uh, committee report, I am going to turn, uh, the, uh, light actually on, uh, Erin Ford, my vice chair, who is going to give the report on the two applications that we had, and then when Erin concludes, I will give a, uh, uh, brief, brief report on, uh, the CLIP Task Force, the, uh, community-led improvement plan for, uh, Penn Station and, uh, surrounding. So I'm going to turn it to Erin, if that's okay.
Great. Erin, you're on.
Okay, thank you, Leila. Thank you, Vicki. Um, we had two resolutions this month. Um, I'd like to have them deem red and would like to bundle them with one vote.
And bundled.
Hey, the first is an application for an office space lease at 127 West 30th Street for the Manhattan South Traffic Enforcement Unit. Um, a brief overview of, of this unit and what they do. They cover, uh, 34th Street to Hudson Street, Houston Street, river to river, with enforcement of parking rules, regulations, directing traffic, towing, construction compliance, and parades, as well as emergency response to planned or unplanned events. Currently, they are using temporary locations at 469 Seventh Avenue and 59 Maiden Lane, which is out of our district. Based on the City Charter, Section 195, the city leasing office space needs to notify the community and be reviewed by the CPC for approval. The proposed location is the entire floor and part of, entire second floor and part of the third floor at 127 West 30th, between 6th and 7th Avenues, formerly home to Blink Fitness, where commercial use is allowed as of right, um, as this is an M16 zoning district. Um, approximately 150 to 200 staff would work out of this new office. There are currently 83 parking spaces assigned to the NYPD on West 30th Street, um, between 6th and 7th Avenue. That would be shared between the NYPD Citywide Traffic Task Force, who is already, uh, based on that block at 138 West 30th Street, and the newly moved into the block Manhattan South Traffic Enforcement Unit. The unit has 23 official vehicles, of which 21 will remain off-site out of our district um, at a location on West 33rd between 11th Avenue and West Side Highway. Um, there will be shuttle vans taking staff back and forth from that location to the new office space. Two of the existing 83 spots will be assigned to the executive staff of the new MSTE unit, and there are no changes to the parking allocation for NYPD on West 30th Street. Uh, the committee approved this application unanimously, 8-0-0.
Okay. Does anyone have a conflict with this application? Are there any questions? Any comments? Okay, next reso.
Okay, our next application is the new Thompson Central Hotel, which is located between 6th and 7th Avenues on West 56th Street and West 57th Street, formerly the Parker Meridian. Vicky, I would like to correct the heading for the application at 119 West 56th Street on line 195. It should read "Application for modifications to a special permit for the arcade and two chair certifications for the Public Plaza Pops and Open Air Cafe."
Okay, can you give that wording to the board office? Give it to Marisa if she doesn't have it already?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So the building began construction in 1979, has 423,000 square feet of floor area, approximately 15.96 FAR. It utilized bonus development rates derived from the creation of a public plaza, but it did not utilize any of the additional bonus development from the creation of the through-block arcade, due in part at the time of the urging of CB5 to reduce the height of the building. The applicant is Parker 57 LLC, who purchased the building in in January 2019 and is seeking four non-Uler modifications to the indoor through-block arcade and two certifications by the Chair of CPC to the Outdoor Public Plaza Pops, Regulation 37625 for the design change, and 37-73 for the cafe. First, I'm going to discuss the special permit modifications for the arcade. So the through-block arcade is the northernmost portion of 6 and 1/2 Avenue, which is a mid-block pedestrian pathway connecting West 51st to West 57th by a series of mid-block privately owned public spaces known as POPS. The first modification to the through-block arcade is to improve the signage on all three entrances, including marquee on West 57th Street, two decals on the northern glass doors on West 57th, updated decals on both doors on the southern entrance on West 56th. There were previously very limited outdated signage throughout that portion of the POPS. The second modification to the arcade POPS special permit is the legalization of the bar as a permitted obstruction within the northern portion of the through-block arcade, all done by the previous ownership of this building. The proposed modification would also stipulate the configuration of 26 tables and 52 seats. The applicant has agreed to have signage at the 26 tables that state public space, no service required. Seating is open to the public without any purchase necessary. This modification would also remove decorative ledges, a big gate that was constructed in the mid 80s, and provide a more open path for better access through the arcade. The third modification of the Arcade POPS permit will create an additional 16 seats and 32 tables for public use, with the applicant agreeing to have signs at the tables, including public use of these seedings, where there will also be new free Wi-Fi in this this whole area. The total amount of proposed seating for all the areas of the arcade combined is 121 seats, 58 tables, compared to the existing 68 seats and 12 tables. The applicant has also agreed to the public use of the restroom located down a staircase from the central section of the arcade. Previously, only hotel guests with key cards had access to these rooms, these restrooms. And they've agreed to have hotel staff will monitor and maintain these restrooms 24 hours a day. And even though these restrooms are not technically within the boundaries of the official plaza or POPS, they will be in effect used as public space, which is a huge win for this application. The fourth modification to the Arcade POPS permit is a change to the boundaries of the through-block arcade by swapping 128 square feet in a reconfiguration with the construction of the new design layout, pushing the lobby elevators back from the front desk for ease of access to the south entrance on West 56th Street. This is the construction that is still undergoing construction and is expected to be completed in the next six months. Now, moving on to the certifications. Two more here. The applicant is also seeking a certification for the public plaza on West 56th Street. The plaza covers over 27, 2,743 square feet. And the associated bonus development rates of the plaza were utilized by the developer in 1979 to generate an additional 27,430 square feet of floor area, approximately an additional one FAR when the building was constructed. The current regulations for the public plaza are more detailed than they were in 1979 when the plaza was constructed. The current owner is proposing to bring the plaza much closer to the current plaza regulations. The certification for the design change is to stipulate additions to the plaza that would include four trees, two new public plaza signs. There was no signage on this location, 60 linear feet of benches, two trashcans, new lighting, and two bike racks. The existing plaza had zero plantings, no seating, no public signage, no no trash, no lighting or bike racks. The final certification is to legalize the Open Air Cafe, which has unfortunately been operating since 2015. The cafe is 176 square feet, or approximately 6.4% of the plaza. It has 16 movable seats, eight movable tables. And the current stipulations of the Open Air Cafe would be allowed up to 20% of the plaza footage. This one is well within that confines. Current operator at this Open Air Cafe, which is on 56th Street, is the Indian accent. Burger joint will be moving to another location. They're not going away. There was a lot of fear on that. But they they are still in business at this on this block. The applicant has also agreed for non-exclusive use of these tables and chairs and signage for each of these tables and seating area to allow public seating in this Open Air Cafe, which is a a current Community Board Five stipulation with these locations. With all these factors, although normally Community Board Five does not support the after-the-fact legalization and non-compliance, the new owner is committed to working with the community and Community Board Five and has created a new plan that is substantially beneficial for the community at large in regards to the use of public space. The committee recommended approval for the modification of the special permits for the arcade and approvals for both certifications for the plaza design changes and legalization of the Open Air Cafe. Vote was unanimous, 800 to 0.
What a breath of fresh air. I mean, really, that's incredible. Does anyone have any conflict? Let's start with that. Any questions? I just made my comment, but does anybody have any other comments? Dave?
Yes, I just want to briefly say I walked through the space the other day and it's beautiful. The signage is up, clear for everybody to see that it's a public space, open to everybody to bring their own stuff. And it's a gorgeous space. You have to go and check it out. It's terrific.
And it was pretty awful before, right?
It was awful. I remember I lived in that neighborhood when it was the Great Northern Hotel. Before it was the Parker Meridian. And they had a walkway through from 56th to 57th Street. So there's always been that walkway there, but this is by far the most attractive thing they've ever done there. It's great.
Right. Any other comments? Renee?
How amazing, a public bathroom.
I know, I know. Lots of good things there, really. Anyone else? Okay. No comments. That means we can we can vote on. You bundled them, didn't you?
Yes, yeah, we bundled the two resolutions.
So let's take a vote on those and then we'll have the update from Leila. Mary? Young?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Dens?
Yes.
Sandorf?
Yes.
Slutskin?
Yes.
Sigmund?
Yes.
Sherburne?
Yes.
Shapiro?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McCall?
Yes.
Mafia?
Yes.
Levise?
Yes.
Legisco?
Yes.
Kinsella?
Yes.
Kalifarski?
Yes.
Khan?
Yes.
Keback?
Yes.
Isaacs?
Yes.
Brishberg?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gashow?
Yes.
Fruer?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Ellington?
Yes.
Doeson?
Yes.
Brosnahan, yes. Beichman?
Yes.
Athenel?
Yes.
Nikailis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Thank you. And now we have an update. I believe, is that from you, Leila?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Thank you, Vicky. Happy New Year, everyone. And yes, so we just a brief update on the CLIP Task Force. As you know, the Community Led Improvement Plan for the Penn Station Neighborhood and Surroundings was passed through a resolution in October, and we have been hard at work since then. We have convened the the task force with members of Community Board Five. And the our effort will be actually open to non-members of CB5 who have expertise that will be valuable for our effort. So in the course of this past month, we have done outreach to most of our elected officials. We met with Councilmember Butcher, Borough President Mark Levine, Assemblymember Tony Simone. At the time, he was still Assemblymember-elect. He was joined by then Assemblymember DeGottfried. We met with State Senator Lewis Kruger, as well as Senator Holman. We also met with Senator Comrie. Senator Leroy Comrie is represents Queens, but he is also the Chair of the Corporations Committee. And as such, he has jurisdiction over the MTA as well as ESD. Senator Comrie has been very involved in the issue of Penn Station and the role of ESD and at MTA with both the the real estate slash land use proposals known as GPP that we've been opposing pretty much since its inception, as well as the various proposals to, you know, quote-unquote fix Penn Station. We had significant outreach with civic organizations as well. We met notably with Municipal Art Society, as well as the New York Landmarks Conservancy. We are still in the process of continuing this outreach. We're working on scheduling a meeting with our House Representative Jerry Nadler. This meeting will actually also convene our other elected officials. The idea really is to get, you know, the entire delegation representing us to join this effort. As you heard at the beginning of the meeting, Assemblymember Simone is very, very concerned about what's going on at Penn Station and very eager to work with us. And we really welcome this partnership. This is going to be very critical, and we are confident that Assemblymember Simone will be our champion to actually push this effort. As we said in the resolution, the idea is really to aim for cross-acceptance. So as such, we have also reached out to Madison Square Garden, Macy's, and we will continue to engage with, you know, property owners, tenants, residents, businesses, small or big, so that we bring everybody at the table. We have been speaking with consultants because we certainly know and understand and appreciate that we will need this this technical assistance from consultants, urban planners, urban designers, public farm experts, transportation experts. And the preliminary conversations that we've had have been very positive with a great deal of eagerness from these consultants to actually work with us and support our efforts. We have asked MAS, Municipal Art Society, to become our fiscal sponsor. We are hopeful that this is something they will be able to consider. Once we have a fiscal sponsor, we will be able to raise funds so that we can actually properly fund this initiative and hire the the technical support that we will need. And we are very, very hard at work identifying sources of funding and working with the council member, the Borough President, who do have discretionary funding available for which we may be able to to apply. We have also identified a very substantial state grant that actually co-administered by ESD to the tunes of millions of dollars, which we don't need millions of dollars, rest assured. But this is a source of funding that would be, that actually is is exactly targeted for that that kind of of initiative revitalization of of an area and land use action led by community groups. So we fall fair and square in the in the definition of of this grant program. Overall, we are making a lot of progress. It is, you know, it is going to be a lot of work. On a parallel track, kind of pun intended, we are working on organizing a transportation town hall so that we can have a robust discussion about the transportation modalities at Penn Station. Should Penn Station remain a terminal? Should it become through-running? The Transportation Committee has already done a great deal of work on on this question. CB5 is on record in favor of through-running and through-running, you know, another way of saying through-running is a one-seat train ride, let's say, from New Jersey to Long Island. This is what through-running would look like. You would be able to go from, let's say, New Brunswick, New Jersey to Ronkonkoma, Long Island, without having to stop, you know, exit your plane, your your train and catch another one. Or even through-running could actually connect to Harlem and Westchester. So we want to have a robust conversation about what it would look like, what kind of impacts it would have. And if Penn Station remains a terminal, what limitations would we would we face? And in the long term, what limitations we would see? The the date is tentative. It will be sometime in February. If you are interested to help with organizing this this event, please reach out to me or to Marky Levise. And we will, of course, keep you updated when we have a a date, as well as the the panel, the panel for this this town hall. So yeah, I think that that concludes this report on what we've been doing. If you have an interest in broadly joining this effort, If you have any interest in broadly joining this effort, um, I would suggest that, you know, similarly, please reach out to me, uh, reach out to Maki or to, uh, Semir Lavingia, um, and, uh, let us know that, you know, you would like to, uh, to, to be involved. And, uh, we will, uh, continue to update you on this, uh, important issue. This will take, uh, most of 2023, uh, you know, so we're, we're going to be busy working on that, and, uh, we want to make sure that you're all, uh, aware of what's going on.
Okay, thank you, Leila and Aaron. Um, that now moves us into Parks and Public Spaces, Craig?
Thanks, Vicky. Uh, we have one resolution on the agenda, which I would like to de- like to have to read.
So deemed.
So, this is not your typical Parks and Public Spaces application. The City Office of Technology and Innovation, which is, you know, is OTI, presented, along with one of its vendors, City Bridge, to talk about the Link NYC, uh, sorry, Link NYC 5G Towers. I'm sure several of you have seen them, or read some Instagram posts where people just wake up one morning and magically see these towers five feet from their bedroom window. Uh, this initially came to us for a very specific application, to put one of these towers on the northwest corner of 53rd and 6th, along with a plaque. The significance of this specific location was that it was the site of the first cellphone call in history. However, given these towers were new, and we didn't really know a lot about them, we decided to take a step back and, and really have them talk more about the towers themselves, where they are, why they are, how they'll work, where, and the future plans, you know, where they'll, where they'll go with the district. The towers will bring 5G to the surrounding area. They're thirty-two feet high, they'll include electronic screens similar to those found on, on the Link NYC kiosks that we see now that display advertising and public information. The design has been approved by the Public Design Commission. As of now, uh, according to OTI, there are no plans to install any other 5G towers within CB Five, but the keywords there are, as of now, there is no master plan, there is no commitment to place, there is no commitment not to place any. It's possible they re- could request additional sites in commercial parts of the district or in residential parts of the district, or both. The committee had numerous concerns about these towers. As I indicated, there's no master plan, we don't want to look at these towers individually, we wanted a plan. They say they may replace many of the current eleven-feet-high existing 4G technology, uh, kiosks. There were concerns that this would pop up more in, in more residential areas of the district, and possibly only a few feet from bedroom windows. We've seen that happen already in other, other districts. Uh, the 5G towers do not have huge range, and only a few feet, in fact. So it's very possible when they start putting these up, there's going to be a lot of them, and pretty close together to get proper range. The towers are going to affect sightlines and, and affect the aesthetics of our streets and sidewalks. They'll take over valuable sidewalk space, which in some parts of the district, as we know, are already way over-impacted. On the potential placement, this committee had several suggestions as to where to put these on the street, so using existing light poles, underground, in buildings, but in each case, City Bridge said it would not work, uh, and give adequate 5G coverage, because they're just not that close. The co- they're not just, they, they have to be pretty close to, to the people. The contract with the city only provides her placement on the public right-of-way and not on private buildings. Because when they're on, in private buildings, the contract is actually with the building and between the vendor, like, rising on the building itself. This needs to be a lot closer to the public, as I mentioned, than, than private buildings will allow, and they're not negotiating with building owners. The city is essentially leasing its space. Potential pot- potential placement in historic districts, that was a big issue for CBA. While this would need to go through LPC, it's possi- Landmarks Preservation Commission, sorry. It's possible that this goes through LPC, but we all have significant concerns that it will go through LPC, and we'll wind up seeing these places like the Ladies Mile Historic District, which I know would not make, uh, many of our friends on the Landmark Committee very happy. Not enough public engagement, there needs to be more engagement with the public, including residences, businesses, and community groups. Many people simply don't know anything about these, and they're being, they're shocked when they see these are being put up. So we want more public engagement. And, and also, in a district that has the density that we have, are these really needed? Are there many dead spots? We just don't have the net, the numbers. Let me be clear, the committee is not anti-technology. We all agree, we want New York City to have the best technology possible, for residents, for our businesses, and for our tourists and other visitors. We have language in the resolution that we do support technology and, and eventually 5G technology, but we just want more data and more time. However, so, given this, we approve, disapprove of the sighting of any 5G towers, and ask for a moratorium until more answers are provided. Something that resembles a master plan is put forth, and the public is given far more opportunities for input. One other point, as a member of the public noted earlier, CBA, which covers the Upper East Side, did pass a resolution last month about these towers, expressing a wide array of concerns, including many that we had brought up, and also, they had a number of questions of potential safety. So they also asked for a moratorium, and that was passed. So our resolution asking for the moratorium was passed, uh, unanimously, I think it was thirteen zero zero zero. Yes, thirteen zero zero zero.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. Uh, does anyone have a, a conflict with this resolution? Are there any questions? Any comments to the resolution? Todd? Todd, unmute yourself.
Sorry, guys. So, I'm in the technology business, everybody here, I think, knows that I run a technology conference center, and my people are often coming in from outside of the city, and they take advantage of these things. But Craig and our committee, you know, again, he, he made the point that we, we, we are not against technology, but the city has got to do a better job of this. Uh, they're contracting out for these, uh, towers that aesthetically, uh, look like they came from Mars. And, again, they're not taking, looking at the big picture and, uh, having a master plan. And, again, this is our job as a community board to put the heat in them to do it right. Um, and I totally support this, uh, and I hope the other community boards, I mean, the, the ones, they're, they're all going to be facing this to a greater or lesser extent. We've got to work together from them, and to me, it, it really is intellectual laziness on, on the part of the city, that they can't do these environmental impact statements or master plans. It, it's entirely foreseeable that these issues are going to come up. So, I hope we can do this, and, you know, let's, let's pay attention to this issue.
Thanks, Todd, Leila?
Yeah, I, I want to really, uh, applaud the work of the, uh, the committee. I think that, uh, you know, going beyond simply commenting on, uh, the, uh, the, the proposed, uh, uh, 5G, um, tower, uh, is, uh, is very wise and very smart. Um, I would like to say that, uh, you know, it, it is my hope that if another, uh, one of those, uh, uh, towers is proposed in CB Five and it is in, in a historic district, I think it is, uh, acutely important that the Landmarks Committee gets a chance to, uh, to comment and weigh in. I think that they really have no place, and, uh, we may want actually to, uh, you know, send the signal to the city that, um, you know, we, even if they come with a master plan, even if we are convinced that they may be, uh, you know, good for the public interest, they should not be installed, uh, in historic districts.
Okay, thank you, Leila, any, uh, Maki?
Thank you, Vicky, and, uh, it looks like the sighting plan is ever-evolving. So for those who are interested, both on the board and for members of the public, uh, OTI says that they'll be, uh, periodically updating a dataset. So use your favorite search engine and just search for NYC 5G OTI dataset, and it will get you the link to that, and it's searchable by street as well as, uh, community board district. And it did say on that site, uh, that any poles that are located near parks and/or, uh, historic districts will go through the, uh, Department of Parks and Recreation and/or landmarks.
Okay, thank you, Maki. Mike?
Yeah, I just, uh, made the point, and I wanted to make it in front of the full board, that, uh, as quickly as these 4G, uh, eleven-foot towers became obsolete, I'm wondering how long it's going to take for these thirty-foot things, if they start planting them all over the city, for them too to become obsolete, and then, how do they get rid of them?
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we will take this to a vote.
Great. Young?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Spence?
Yes.
Vandorf?
Yes.
Bloodskin?
Yes.
Sigmund?
Yes.
Sherburne?
Yes.
Shapiro?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McCall?
Yes.
Mafia?
Yes.
Livisay?
Yes.
Lagisco?
Yes.
Nsella?
Yes.
Kalifarski?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Keback?
Yes.
Isaacs?
Yes.
Brishberg?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gasha?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Ellington?
Yes.
Doeson?
Yes.
Brosnahan is yes, Beichman?
Yes.
Athenel?
Yes.
Nikaelus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Um, Maki and Todd, uh, your hands are up, is that from before? Okay. Um, all right, that takes us to, um, a report, even though, um, there were no action items coming out of the Bex Committee this month. They did meet, and Renee is going to give you a report on what transpired, Renee?
Sure, thank you, Vicky. Um, just briefly, the Bex Committee heard from Councilmember Powers. Um, he highlighted his legislative priorities, including a package of noise bills. Um, I think Laurie mentioned the details earlier of the noise with, um, the car camera, the noise cameras. Um, he noted staff shortages in many of the city agencies, and also that it would be helpful for the board to be very clear in our budget priorities this year, given those shortages. He also spoke about the Fair Chance Bill, which is currently being reworked, and he took, um, a lot of questions on that topic. Um, we then heard from DCP, they gave us an overview of the fiscal calendar and the budget process. Um, it was particularly helpful for new people on, on the committee, as well as a refresher for people, um, who've been on for a while, and they also gave us some, uh, tools and tips for the committee, as well as, um, some ways that they are going to help us going forward. We then had, um, the Independent Budgets Office come in, um, they provided their overview of the current state of the city, as well as their projections of the budget, um, going forward for the next couple of years. Uh, we then had the New York Civil Liberties Union come. They wanted to discuss the NYPD Strategic Response Unit, who they believe should be disbanded. Um, they wanted to remind the board that there will be a hearing on January twenty-third by the City Council's Committee on Public Safety regarding this unit, um, and that individuals in the board could offer their commentary at that time.
Okay, thank you so much, Renee. That concludes the agenda for this meeting, which now takes us into our public session. If there's anyone from the public who did not have the opportunity to speak at the public hearing, please raise your hand. Mike?
Yeah, hi, um, I just wanted to remind the, uh, um, the entire, uh, Community Board Number Five that I will be offering the free tour of the Garment District on Monday, which is a holiday, the, uh, sixteenth. I still have a couple of spaces available. Here, you're going to walk around the neighborhood and see, actually with your own eyeballs, what's going on with terms of vacant spaces and the people who are wandering the area, even more pronounced on a holiday when the businesses that remain are, uh, closed for the holiday season. So, welcome, I, just send me an email, you got my email address, we have a couple more spaces, and I will be doing it again, the tour, uh, free, open to the public, uh, next, uh, in February.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Anyone else from the public? I don't see any hands raised, I just want to be sure. Okay, seeing none, and if there's no new business, Renee, is your hand raised?
Yes, Vicky, if I may, could I give, just give a quick update on the bathroom task force?
Sure.
Um, I, I, I just wanted to let you know, we're in the process of outreach to all the community boards in an initiative to create a text amendment regarding the bathroom access in public plazas. Um, we're, we're trying to require that, uh, public plazas greater than ten thousand square feet in any areas that include food, food service, must also include public restroom access as one of the three additional required amenities. We've presented to CB One, we did that on Monday, um, they're in favor. We, um, also, uh, presented Julie and Betty Kay, um, presented to CB Four last night. Um, we are going to present to CB Five's Land Use Committee on, um, the twenty-fourth, and then Chelsea's Land Use Committee is going to be next. Um, the, the idea is to go, um, to the Borough Board with this, and, um, to keep the idea of bathrooms and access moving. Um, it's just one piece in the push for the public bathrooms. Um, the MTA bathrooms are being open, and we haven't forgotten about the APTs that the city still has, and we heard that the city just got a Portland Loop. So, it's just one piece in a greater scheme of getting access to bathrooms. So I just wanted to give that update.
Great, thank you, and thanks to both you, to your committee, and to Julie, in particular, for really moving this forward. You heard what the Borough President said, I mean, Nancy?
I just wanted to ask Renee about the ten thousand square feet and larger. Um, you know, all of the public plazas that we're requiring in, uh, East Midtown are ten thousand square feet. Is there a way you could reduce that? Because when those come before us, we try to encourage public bathrooms in that, and you may be kneecapping us if you go with ten thousand. Could you reduce the square footage so that maybe to nine thousand square feet or something? I mean, it's just a thought.
I mean, w- we're doing it within the, I mean, there, the, the zoning regulations have ten thousand square feet at, as language with requiring the three amenities, so we use that as the baseline. I mean, certainly, when we come to the Land Use Committee, Nancy, um, for CB Five, you can suggest that. We, we use that as sort of the baseline and the framework for coming forward as an easy lift. Because, um, if you recall, um, the ten thousand square feet, they require three amenities. They require the plantings, or the chairs, or the, right? So we use the ten thousand square feet as sort of the baseline of what was there, and sort of slipped it in that way, um, just as an easy lift to have the conversation as we go around to all the community boards. But certainly, like, when we come to CB Five, sure. Suggest that.
Okay, Leila?
Uh, Nancy, you're raising a, a, a very good point. So just so you know, uh, Julie and Renee, uh, will actually present, uh, the, the, the draft of a, uh, resolution, uh, to the, the Land Use Committee, um, later in, uh, in January. So we'll have a chance to actually look at these and really dissect, uh, you know, the, 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 the work, and, uh, you know, figure out how to, uh, you know, make it work to, you know, the, the, the best of what we can accomplish in CB Five. Uh, when we had conversations with other community boards, we did agree that we didn't have to have exactly the same language, because, you know, each community board has its, its differences, and, uh, we want to be mindful of that. Um, uh, but at the same time, I think there's, there's enough coming out of the, uh, in, uh, the intent to install, uh, public bathroom or provide access. Uh, but definitely, you know, keep those good questions, and we're going to have a, a, a good conversation at the next committee meeting.
Great, thanks, Leila. Dave?
One quick note, I was trying to get the last word in here. In terms of the twenty twenty-two wrap-up, I think we all want to thank Vicky for the incredible job she's done the last year, rounding us all together, getting everything done, making all the connections we need. Vicky, thank you for the wrap-up.
My goodness. Thank you, thank you. The applause goes to all of you, honestly, but thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, I think, on that note, I will adjourn the meeting. I look forward to seeing you next month with all our committee meetings and full board in February. So, Happy New Year again, have a wonderful twenty twenty-three, prosperous and healthy. Night, everyone.
Good night, Happy New Year to all.